So.
Okay.
Yeah, I was present for that discussion and I just thought in the case of something like older silver and I see at the pot shops, it's a volatile commodity that goes up and down and like.
You bought milk lately?
I didn't go out that much.
No, last time I went to buy milk, I was shocked. Okay, any other comments or public comment relating to sign ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close it at seven eleven. With the public hearing closed, we'll move on to the new business, which is the sign ordinance.
And managing planning commission, unless they have any changes to the ordinance, would make a motion to send the ordinance over to the county for their review and comment.
Correct. And he discussion from the planning commission relating to the sign ordinance?
Make that motion there that we send it to Grand Terrace County for review and comment.
All right, we have a motion to send the sign ordinance amendment to Grand Terrace County Planning for review. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of sending it for review, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. We're now to old business, the US 31 M 72 Business District. We have been working on an architectural standard amendment, which we have in our packet this evening. John, would you like to?
I can.
Discuss?
I, this is a reflection of the attorney put into ordinance format, the changes that were going to be made to the US 31 M 72 ordinance based on your direction at the last meeting to discuss this, which I think was maybe a mecca meeting, because John didn't have time to get it together for the meeting. So this is what is currently been outlined or recommended by the PC. The next step would be to schedule a public hearing on the amendment for July and then we would start that process of planning commission, public hearing, and then passing it to the county and then coming back and eventually making it back to the board of trustees for adoption. But that's currently where we're at. This is just the, this is the ordinance amendments and the amendments in ordinance form that was put together by Mr. Jackson. Anybody have any comments?
Anybody have any comments on this? We had previously discussed the front build two line. I believe after Trey went to an MDOT thing, talking about the build two line for the front for corridor flex, corridor shoreline and corridor commercial. And I just want to make sure the numbers that are on there are the numbers that were the right numbers and they didn't get changed back to the old numbers, because I have them circled here in the notes. As those are the too close for plow trucks.
We had, we moved, I think commercially we moved back to twenty feet.
Because that was at five? And then the corridor flex was at five because that's the one that's.
Just more in trial.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that we handled that while we're looking at this. Anybody else have any comments? Is anybody feeling moved that we would have a public hearing?
I would make a motion that we have a public hearing for the amendment to the Acme Township ordinance, section six point six, at the next, the July meeting.
To be July thirteenth.
July thirteenth, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. All right, we have a motion, we have a second to set a public hearing for our July thirteenth planning commission meeting to review section six point six, the US 31 M 72 Business District. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving right along. The VGT presentation of stormwater final engineering plan. I could begin this by saying this is in no way a review by the planning commission. This is just a presentation so we know what has happened. The township attorney and planner and engineers determined that the stormwater plan that was presented met the ordinance and so it's not something that we as a planning commission need to review. However, we had questions from the public about seeing what it was, so John has agreed to give a presentation on what the final product is.
Correct.
Correct. Good.
The, as the chairperson mentioned, the, at several of the meetings, the township attorney and myself basically said that plans are reviewed and approved according to the stormwater ordinance and also the MDEQ BMP guidelines for constructive wetlands, that if they comply with those stormwater and the SGP, that they will be approved as final engineering by the new PMS interpretation. And based on the review that was done by Gosling Zubek, who is the township engineer and Cardinal, which is the Cardinal consultants that were retained to do the review on the constructive wetland portion, the plans meet, as David mentioned, meet or exceed stormwater ordinance and the MDEQ BMPs for constructive wetland. The process that we went through to get to this point started probably about three years ago during the review of the SGP and preliminary submission of all the preliminary engineering drawings that were part of that process. When the planning commission approved the SGP, it did so based on a report that was part of the SGP documents that was filed by King and McGregor, that complies with planning commission's intent to create a stormwater system that was also had incorporated a constructive wetland or a treatment train component. The report they had submitted qualified and quantified that type of system, but the drawings that they had attached to their report, which is the three kidney bean basins, were basically taken from the BMP guidebook as an example of what this thing would look like in relationship to other stormwater facilities that are built in the county, which are just large, open ponds. So with that in mind, the next step of the process was that once the work had commenced on the site, once the grading had started, the site needed to be stabilized based on the DEQ guidelines. In fact, they say that the BMP should not be used during construction for any time when there's sedimentation control going on, because remember, part of the system, the reason why this works is because of the amount of plant material that's used to help treat the water as it moves through the system before it gets to the creek. So if you were out there and put the plant materials in and you still didn't have the site stabilized, the chances are that the plants would get, basically they would be caught up in the erosion or they'd have sedimentation on top of them and they would die. So really, the part of the plan that is what the community is interested in, what the planning commission required, is happening now at the later stage of the construction because the site is in a stabilized form. The end result of the engineering, approved engineering plans was based on about six months, what I could say fairly extensive, if not a very unique condition, where we had multiple engineers working on the design and the hydro pad modeling. I mentioned it in my memo, the preliminary engineering for this started out with Gordy Fraser, and then it moved into Horizon Environmental and Chris Miran, who is their professional engineer and stormwater designer. Beckett and Rader looked at the preliminary basin designs. Bob Rochaby from Gosling reviewed the modeling and calculations and the compliance with the township stormwater ordinance. Dr. Grobel was involved in the preliminary aspects of the project. And then Adam Chrome, who's a biologist with Cardinal and Para Kissimer, who is also their professional engineer and stormwater designer, was involved in parts of the review. This is the, this is the eastern basin that's closest to the Meyer project. The eastern basin, this area of the basin itself holds about 375,000 cubic feet of water, which is equivalent to about 2.8 million gallons of water. These are large basins that are designed because of the size of the water sheds, there's two water sheds on the site that will collect, before the water gets into these basins, it's going through a series of four bays, which are incorporated into the site. Those were swales that are around the Meyer complex, they're incorporated into the parking lots to be the first catch of sediment before they get into the storm system and make their way into this large basin. These basins, if you go out there, are constructed into two components. There's the pond area, which is this area here, which is the deeper part, and then there's an area on the perimeter, which is called the bench. Okay? And the bench is the beginnings of your wetland construction. So if you go out there today, you'll see that they're in the process of planting the bench. Okay, so the bench area has wetland plants in it, the water will come up, it'll hydrate the plants, the water goes down. When the water starts its movement into the treatment train system, in this one, in the east basin, there's not three, but actually four basins. There's the large basin, tier two, tier three, tier four, and then a series of the large swell, long swell. There's approximately, in this basin, the channels are approximately 660 feet, okay? So there's three different elevations, and within these basins, these are developed as wetlands. So these really get about nine inches deep where you have the check dig. So you have nine inches of water sloping back to just about zero. Flows over, nine inches flowing back, flowing back again, and then eventually making its way out of the system. The planting plan for these basins looks like this. These are, this is the bench area, which is in the teal color, which is a basin shelf seed mix. And then as you move through around, the entire, there's an upland buffer seed mix. Inside the basin area, there's a basin shelf seed mix, and then there's a grass swell seed mix that goes through the grass swell system. And there's a series of plant, wetland plants that have been specified that are going to be planted. Some of them are planted. They're not just going to be seed, they actually have plants that are planted into the ground. There's a series of shrubs that are planted and trees around the development as well. The amount of grass seed mix is around 4,000 square feet. The basin shelf mix inside the pond is 14,000 square feet, 41,000 square feet of herbaceous plants, and 181,000 square feet of upland buffer seed mix. And these are all specified by the environmental company that reviewed the plans and King and Gregor. In fact, their folks are out there supervising the construction of the, of the planting The basin, which is closest to the internal roundabout, which is to the west, is a little bit different, obviously, in the size. The channel system length on this system is approximately almost 1,200 feet in length. There's a significant drop in topography, so the tiers that are built on this basin, instead of being built here where there is a drop in the topography, they're built closer down into the site, so the water will move through the treatment train facility and then it'll go into tier two, tier three, before making its way out into the creek. Okay? That basin holds 313,000 cubic feet of water, which is the equivalent of about three and a half Olympic swimming pools. Okay, and as the eastern basin, there's a series of four bays that are collecting water before it gets into this system. Now, one of the things that the planning commission needs to understand in the community is that these systems are currently based on the water sheds, and part of the water sheds are currently undeveloped. So as mentioned in the engineer's letter, as new development occurs and other pieces of property is developed within the VGT, the modeling will be rerun, the hydro modeling will be rerun. And if there needs to be any modifications to these, there will be, or there will be other ones that are built in order to accommodate the development. Okay, so this is not a static situation. This is, these are based on what's currently out there with the Meyer and what the current coefficients of runoff are, and some of that area is grass, so when that gets developed, there's going to be other stormwater, stormwater technologies that have to be employed. Some of the ones that we're talking, you know, so in a, let's say another development comes in, it may not, it may utilize these facilities, it may, they may have to build some additional facilities, or they can take a look at other treatment facilities on the site, much of the same that we talked about with advanced auto, permeable forest pavement, for example. Underground storage tanks under the parking lot to hold the water and then release that into a slow release program. So there's other technologies that could be employed as the project develops. This is the planting plan for this project. You can see the amount of plantings that are going on. Part of our letter, our concluding remark was that the developer at the time that we prepared our final engineering review, did not know if they were going to be able to complete this planting as part of the 2015 construction season. So they made, we offered them that if they weren't going to do the planting in 2015, they needed to come before the planning commission for a minor amendment. However, they are already proceeding with the installation of these. So if you take a look at the site, these are already under final construction, and they're anticipating full completion by September 2015, which is in time prior to the occupancy of the Meyer, because the stormwater system is in condition of occupancy for the Meyer project. So this is within that timeframe. So, after about six months of review, and I, without going into my memo, a half a dozen or so very technical meetings with a number of different engineering firms, environmental consultants, these are the final engineering review plans that were recommended to me by approval by Gosling and Cardinal. So based on their recommendations to me, the final engineering plans for the treatment train and for the constructive wetlands are working. So I want to give that to the review.
Okay. Thank you. Do any members of the planning commission have a question for John while you fear, while we're talking about this?
Is that the water runoff system that's working out there right now, or is there something different there now?
These are current, these are here, okay?
Okay.
And what they've been doing, thankfully, we haven't had the rains that we had in September, October of last year, but when these ponds were getting to a point where they were getting too full, instead of releasing them into, into the air, this, this area had not been constructed yet, they were actually pumping the water, containers are taking it off-site.
Okay.
Okay? Now, in the interim, what they've been doing is, they've been pumping the water between the basins, in order to balance them out temporarily, and they will probably have noticed that they still have that in place, but as these get built and these get vegetated, the system has been designed to basically start working. Now, our environmental biologists, King and McGregor as well, as well as Horizon, have all said that these are going to get planted, but it takes a good three years for the plant materials, materials to fully establish themselves. Okay, it's just like planting grass or a shrub that's small, it takes a while for it to grow and populate, and so these wetlands take a while to develop, and it's going to be a balance between not the plant materials, but also the water or the hydrologic cycle, you know, periods of rain, snow, snow melt, all these conditions that go into these type of natural systems.
Anybody else have a question?
What was the schedule for the plantings?
They're in the process now.
I know they're doing it now, but how long do you do it?
According to Steve Schooler, who's the, one of the project managers, Steve indicated that they'll have, these will be fully, these will be fully installed by September.
When would they be, if you say it takes three years for the plants to establish, when would they be fully functioning? Are they going to function when it's planted in the?
Yeah.
But they'll be, will they function better?
They'll function better. They'll improve with time like a good bottle of wine.
Wouldn't that be nice? So my only comment then is you saying that as time goes forward, if they come back in and want to make modifications, and the hydrologic model says that you have to change them, the only unfortunate thing with that is if it's two years down the road, it's just getting stabilized and we've been ripping it out.
No, they won't, they won't change these, these won't change. They'll add another.
Okay.
Or they'll add another.
Like more bays or make something bigger?
Yeah, or they'll make another system.
Okay. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't want that to get ripped out, moved on, ripped out, moved on.
No, they're not, it's not. And then the other thing is that I want the PC to remember is that, like we're going to be, like you're going to see on some of your, your smaller sites, like your advanced auto, you'll see on projects that are going to be based on your buildup plan, is that some of the technologies may be localized right to that piece of property. Okay? You may have like underground water storage, which some, which some developments are doing. You may have, again, the use of forest pavement, okay? Technologies which reduces some of the amount of water that would go into the treatment train system. All those will be recalibrated every time a development is in. They have the hydrologic model, the CAD model now, is based on, all the engineers are in agreement with everything that goes into that, so they have the model. So as things get developed, they will plug that in, rerun, everything gets rerun, and it'll tell them exactly what types of technologies we have to take a look at under.
You mean our engineers?
Our engineers.
Gosling, Gosling.
Yeah.
Do you have a question? Try to answer.
Yeah, Gavon. So, said to be completed by September for the occupancy, correct?
Yes.
So who is putting, who puts the stamp on that it is completed?
The, there's an occupancy checklist that we are, we work through, and I'll be doing that in conjunction with the township and with the planning. You'll be, you'll be seeing copies of this, you'll be seeing a new revision or a new addition of the checklist that you're July due. But there's, there's many components that are involved in the occupancy checklist. There's the stormwater, there's the sanitary sewer, there's the water, there's the water system, there's the internal roads that have to be fully installed and finally paved. There's the M 72 improvements through substantial completion, not final. MDOT has two sections, they get to a point where they call it operationally complete, where they can open the road up for traffic. We've agreed with that, because then they may come back next spring and plant the trees or put the lights on. The same thing with the roundabout has to be on water, and water has to be operationally complete by then. So there's a number of projects that have to be approved as operationally complete prior to the occupancy permit for the project. So almost on a monthly basis, I'm updating the checklist in conjunction with the engineers and the developers to give us an idea of where we're at on the project.
I have one question. Do they have, are they working with the people that are doing the plantings to make sure that over the next three years, if there are death threats being in place?
There's a, there's a maintenance agreement, okay? And the other part of this is, is they have, their consultant, King and McGregor, is out there laying the grid out for the plantings, and as soon as the plantings start going in, then our, our team is coming in to verify the planting details as well. Okay? So, King and McGregor will be out there, as well as Horizon, that's the, that's the consultants for the developer. Gosling Zubek will be out there to take a look at the engineering on the, on the technical part of it. Cardinal and Beckett Rader will be out there to take a look at the installation of the plant materials based on the plan and the appropriate specifications, because these plant materials have specifications in terms of seed mix and spread and everything else. And then there is a maintenance agreement on the system that they have in place with the township that, that is going to be amended, because now that we have, we have the final boundaries of the drainage easement. We have a drainage easement on file already, but we're going to be amending it to incorporate the legal description now for the new system based on the final engineering.
Are the slow release pipes in that narrower area, is that where those are being put?
No, slow releases.
Oh, in that, okay.
This is all, these are all natural.
Okay.
It's just, these are, those are natural swales with plant mix in them as the water's going through, it's filtered.
So we now have a well timed public comment. Please stand, state your name and address, and come to podium. Try to limit your comments to three minutes, and I am going to open the public comment at seven thirty-seven.
Brian Kelly, Bridgecrest Road. Good evening. I heard you that VGT stormwater design materials provided as part of the packet per month, citizens have asked the township to hold a study session so they could discuss the system, learn about it in progress, and now what we see is a system that we told is in final form. Is that citizen driven? The materials provided are incomplete, the very critical stormwater calculation documents referenced as part of the analysis have not been shared. The summary documents of the system do not tell us how much reserve capacity the present system has as a design, or what level of utilization would occur in a 25-year rain event. The documents carefully avoid whether there will be impact to the creek, they don't address that question. You may recall that the rain events of last September were only a 10-year event and a 1.5-year event, according to the NOAA weather station at the airport. The documents state that Dr. Chris Grobel did a preliminary review, but they omit that he did not accept the design changes or compromises. Page three of the Gosling Zubek review mentions that the basin outlet risers are only 36 inches in diameter, but Acme ordinance requires, as I understand, a diameter of 48 inches. Those are the emergency overflows, as I understand it, for the basins. They don't seem to meet our township ordinance. On basin two, there are two 48-inch storm sewers that feed into the basin. And again, as I understand it, the emergency overflow pipe is a single 24-inch pipe that is 100 feet long. How do two 48-inch pipes flow into a 24-inch pipe, and what happens to that basin only get 100-year rain? Basin one has a very similar problem with two 36-inch sewer pipes feeding into it and 24-inch and 12-inch emergency overflow. Additionally, these outlet risers don't meet the MDEQ BMPs, as I read them, which require that they be. which require that they be located in an accessible area for cleaning. The concern there is that these will clog up. And if they're more towards the center of the basin, you can't get to them because the basin is going to be full of water and potentially kind of muddy if you were to walk into it. Artificial swales on the site terminate abruptly, one near the steep slopes of the creek and the other at the steep slopes of a wetland. The flow from those swales is expected to be 6.14 cubic feet per second. That's 45 gallons per second of water flow. Those endpoints are very prone to erosion. I'd say that they're inadequately engineered, but I'm not an engineer, so I can't really say that definitively. There's been a documented history of erosion at those points in the past. I don't believe they've ever seen anything approaching to the 45 gallon per second design requirement there. It's a major concern. I think that area of the system still needs work. And it needs to work really, really well for decades to come. And if it fails in the future, somebody's going to have to pay to fix that. Two constructed wetlands were required on the east side of the Myers store and are shown on plan prints along Alton Road. Those have been removed from the design last I saw. Discharged from the parking lot and the rooftop of the store will enter the system without the pretreatment that is required in the Acme stormwater ordinance. If you look at the side of the store there, there are, I guess I'd call them gutters up at the roof line that discharged there. And those basins are not there to do pretreatment. The review fails to ascertain or disclose the capacity of the system as designed or whether there is any extra capacity for future development. We're told that there's a CAD system model. That's great. I'm kind of wondering how much capacity the system has right now. The semi-wet habitat is reduced, the plan says, from the approved preliminary plans. Instead, we were told that doing plantings in the swale will replace that. That seems to be cutting corners on what was originally intended and approved there.
Brian?
Yes. Final question? I think we need an analysis of what would occur on the site and if we had a back-to-back 100-year rate event. I think this needs a good forward review.
Do you have comments to submit? Thanks. Yep.
Can we use this time to ask questions?
Uh, yes. I would ask them all and then we'll answer them so we can stay on.
Okay. Charlene Abernathy, 4312 Westbridge Drive. And I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that the train will flow in the Acme Creek. And I'm wondering if that is straight dumping into the creek. And with the system, how are the nutrients going to be cleaned? And I'm concerned about two things. The things that will be used for fertilization. How are those going to be cleaned out before that water hits Acme Creek? And also, how does the system work for the usual parking lot detritus and chemicals, the oil, the gas overrun? And I would like to know how this treatment and system is going to affect that creek and what is going to be done for water temperature control.
I can try to answer some of them.
Okay.
The first question is, the swales don't empty directly into the creek. The swales will empty into the current wetland system that is bound by it. And so they connect with the current wetland system before the wetlands would move through that before it gets into the creek. The issue on nutrients and the issue on temperature, temperature turbidity, suspended solids are currently being monitored at every rain event that we have and/or monthly. And that data has been collected by Horizon Environmental and has been posted on the AcmeFuture.org website under GTTC. So that information, temperature, turbidity, suspended solids, that's been collected right now. Once we move into the, into September, the full-blown water monitoring plan goes into effect, which then has other chemicals that will be analyzed as well. And those will be, they're listed in the, I don't have them memorized, but they're listed in the SUP under the King and McGregor report, which is the water quality monitoring plan that was approved by the developer and signed by the township. That one was put in place. That one was approved by Chris Rovell when he was the consultant to the planning commission on the SUP. Trying to think of some of the others.
The chemicals with the parking lot?
Well, we have four bay systems and there is a four bay. There is a large swale that is built behind the Meyer, between the parking lot or between their service drive, behind the building of Alton Road. That's one of the four bay systems that collects the water that eventually makes its way into the stormwater system. So we're hoping that the four bays, which are a part of the stormwater ordinance, collect some of those initial materials that you were talking about. And that's what the four bay is supposed to do. Any materials off the parking lot, any gas and oil reservoirs are supposed to hit the four bays before they get into the storm system. Those are spread out.
And it's my understanding that certain nitrogen fixing plants excel at capturing heavy metals and different chemicals.
Well, there's a whole biological technology to this thing, which I, you know, that's why I had, we had an environmental biologist in a wetlands company like Cardinal to take a look at. Because the different mixes do different things relative to water quality. So I'm not a biologist, so I'm not getting to explore that or even what I casually know.
One thing I would like to see, but that could be done later, is our flak minerals added to that. They take out some really nasty chemicals in the ground water and they filter that out. Oh, sorry. You can get a lot of those for free and some seedlings to put in or even little shoots. That's a good one to plant there for how it is. One thing I wanted to add about the stream monitoring afterwards. One thing that isn't out there right now is the tribe is also working on this creek too. We have a couple of aquatic biologists that were working on a creek restoration plan for this. And the first phase of that will be to fix the stream crossing the M-72. Right now, it's too short and too fast. The velocity of the water going through creates a barrier for fish and wildlife. So we're going to replace that culvert with a larger one that's three-sided. And we end up having a natural gravel bottom for fish and wildlife passage. The next step would be to actual work on the actual stream restoration. Because if you look at the original baseline measure of the creek done before the construction, the creek was in bad shape. It's been in bad shape for decades. And especially with the fish population and the food for the fish. So if you read through that, you see that. So part of the restoration project is going to be for providing better habitat, try to get rid of some of the sand bottom, you know, providing cover for sunlight for the water temperature, things like that. We've been doing things like that on streams in northern Michigan for a number of years now. And we've had pretty high success rate. So that's one thing we're doing with this creek after the fact. And it'll probably be in conjunction with that water monitoring part. So I just wanted to throw that out there too. Thank you.
Do you have any follow-ups? You have a minute and a half left technically.
Oh, wow. I have to go on easy. What is going to happen in this three years while we're waiting for this system to work? What's going to end up in the creek? And keeping in mind what goes in the creek, goes in the bay, goes on our beaches. And what's going to happen that first three years? And the second thing is, the question, is Acme Creek going to be affected by the stormwater runoff from the property?
Well, it'll be affected in terms of some of the stormwater will make it into the creek. I mean, that's the purpose of the creek because there's natural runoff before the development occurred. And there's going to be runoff now. The key is, the objective is, is to make sure that when the runoff hits the creek or the wetland, that it's been purified to the greatest extent possible. And that's the whole premise behind the constructed wetland system. What are we going to do between now and three years? This is part of the constructed wetland BMP. You, these don't, we don't sprinkle magic seeds and tomorrow they're, it's a full wetland. It's got, it has to grow. But the system is going to be used. But in the meantime as well, we have monitoring in place to check the water quality at three or four different locations within the DGT site. And I also believe that they're looking at water quality upstream as well as downstream to take a look at comparable measurements. Because they would want to do that because they want to make sure that, or they would want to take a look at what composition there is upstream before the water comes into their piece of the property to make sure that what's going on above them, okay? So this is a fairly elaborate stream system, as Steve's mentioned. And it's just not DGT. But there's also a variety of other property owners that have access or the properties have access to the stream. So there is a water monitoring plan in place. And it will, right now, it's looking at, like I said, suspended solids, temperature turbidity. In September, it's going to get picked up to take a look at not only those, but a variety of other chemical profiles, okay? So that's how we're going to manage it. We have to take a look at what the water quality is, what we're looking at, and then make modifications appropriately. But the plans are based on DEQ and based on the county or on the township storm system, which is based on a 25-year storm event, not a 100-year storm event, okay? So I mean, that's all, all the stormwater systems that are being built in this area are following pretty much the same prerequisites. So, but this one's a little bit different because of the size and complexity of it. I don't know if there's anything of this size in Grand Traverse County of a constructed wetland system. There's some small ones, but I don't think anything of this size, the complexity of it.
Any other comments? Yes, yep. You guys can paper rocks as support.
How many of you were around here in 1974?
It's not a fair question.
You're probably not that old yet.
Will you state your name and address?
Chuck Walder, 6584 Bates Road. Well, in 1974, there was a gas eruption out in Williamsburg, which was noted in papers all across the Midwest. And what happened to that? People were evacuated from their homes, their farms, their animals, and every, everything that was living was moved out because they were afraid of explosion. And the way the underwater was running with all the sediment and chemicals, as you would say here. And it took several months for the county and the state and the national people to come up with some answers. And I have yet to recall, and this is a book on the whole thing right here. I don't know where they ever came up with anything like this. Back then, we let God do the work and it seems to come out. All right. Nature will cure itself given time. Here, we're trying to cure it faster than what nature will do it, if I'm reading it right. So I'm looking at some pictures, and I have them here if anybody would like to see them, of plumes in the bay, which you will not believe that were taken by the Coast Guard helicopters and private aircraft. And here, just a couple of years ago, I hear everybody talking, oh, how beautiful this bay is. It's pristine, there's no problems in it. So with this runoff that supposedly came from the project, it's going to be cleaned up, I would say, 100% as a layman, just based on what I've seen before. And so I think there's a lot of unnecessary worry about this. I think there's a lot of self-interest being put into this program. A lot of talk about all the problems that they have out there. But I haven't heard of hardly any constructive comments on what we should do. All I hear is what has been done and how bad it is. And I think we've got to look at the health, safety, welfare of all the people in this area, not just a few people that are so vitally concerned over this, but can't come up with an answer. If anybody would like to see the pictures, I've got them here.
Could you just leave them here so after the...
No, absolutely not.
After the meeting, like, we'll just sit there for like five minutes after the meeting.
This is too valuable to leave.
I agree. I didn't mean like leave it. Will you just stick around so if somebody wants to come see you, they can? Thank you, Chuck. I wasn't trying to steal your pictures. And then we'll come back here.
My name is John Berry, fairly new resident here, last November. Live on Hampshire Drive. First, there are pictures of the Williamsburg gas explosion, if you've seen a little of it. That's one thing. The other thing is regarding how the systems behave with the runoff. Does the, or is there data from, say, the casino or from the Grand Traverse Country Club area that might give you something to feel how all this is going to work?
You would be the best person to answer that?
Well, it's kind of a hard question to answer because the water out at Turtle Creek is definitely separate from the bay water.
Okay.
The groundwater is. And there's certain, I don't know, microbes or chemicals that are present there that aren't in the bay, which dictates that it's definitely a separate system. So where that transitions to the bay, I'm not sure where that is.
Well, no, I just meant that you can have some sense of what the runoff from a parking lot.
Oh, yes, yeah.
The volumes, the kinds of stuff coming out. You might have something of a model just how this area is responding when that occurs. That's all.
Yeah, we do have that from our civil engineers on projects.
It might be good to reference.
That's all. Thank you.
Thanks. And welcome, John, to our township. Would you like your turn?
Paul Roundog, 3733 Alton Road. I'd like to know, you know, the data is readily reliable what the volume of water is going to come off that parking lot here. That's enormous. If you have a half an inch of rain, that's, you know, the flow. How is that related to what these basins hold?
That the property is divided into two different watersheds, okay?
Which watershed are you talking about?
Well, there's 100, about 182 acres.
I understand.
That the 122 acres is broken out into two different watersheds.
But they all flow to Acme Creek.
They all flow to Acme Creek. And then the engineers, based on their calculations and their modeling, took into consideration rainfall, the amount of property that's currently, that's undeveloped, the amount of property that is going to be under roof, the Myers project, and the amount of property that's going to be paved. And based on all those different coefficients of runoff, they were plugged into their hydroCAD modeling in order to develop the system. So all that's been included in computations in terms of how the engineers do this.
Why isn't that volume on your reports?
The, it's, the volume is on a printout that's available, if you would like it, at the township. It's a hydroCAD model printout of all the calculations. It's what the engineers use in order to do the design work.
Originally, when all the meetings were up with the pulp troops and stuff, there was a retaining pond along Alton Road beside the one that's... there was a retaining pond along Alton Road beside the one that's supposedly along Myers. There was a retaining pond.
Yes, we were on the original plans.
Oh, our township supervisor told me a few weeks ago there wasn't. Well, there was. And that was, it was very elaborate plans on how that, like you're saying, you know, it flowed here and then there was this kind of plant here. Why was all that stuff aside?
There is a swale behind Myers story.
That's what I'm talking about. There was a swale further towards the creek. On the other side of the driveway that goes into Myers. To take that flow, some of that flow.
Well, some of the original, some of you go back on this project a lot longer than I've been involved in. But some of the original concepts for the stormwater was basically a traditional stormwater system.
Well, they were not. They were way more elaborate than what you have with...
Well, some of the, some of the original plans were a traditional stormwater system, which was basically a series of detention ponds. Those were the original plans that I had, okay? During the discussions with the planning commission and the community during this review process, it was decided to go to a constructed wetland system. And that is what these are reflecting, okay? So, this has been an evolutionary process from the very, very beginning, back in 2001 or '02, to what it currently is in 2015.
So, it was completely moved from where it originally was?
Some of these have been moved based on the final engineering. Some of them have been moved based on the final engineering.
Where was all the approval on that?
The approval was part of the SGP. The SGP said that these had to be built.
All right. Any other public comment?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm John Zolldeck, 10351 Avery Road. I just have a simple question. There's plans, there's changes that will take place in the development that will affect the plans. Who or what organization representing Acme Township will be monitoring these changes and the implementation of the plan? Plans are one thing, execution is another. So, who has the responsibility to make sure that the execution occurs?
I'm going to let Johnny through though.
With these plans here, it'll be a combination of Gosling Zubek, who's the township engineer, Cardinal Environmental, who's been retained as the biologist and the environmental scientist, and myself, Becken and Ray. But primarily Gosling and Cardinal will do the site inspection work to make sure these are implemented per design.
And those people will come back to the planning committees?
Yes, yes. Their reports come in.
With what, with what frequency?
Well, during, during the inspection, every time the township engineers out there, they file an inspection report. Every time we have the streams are monitored, there's a report. Everything has been filed and posted on the website. So, every time we get an inspection report, either done by Horizon, who's the developer's representative, or by Gosling, who is our representative, or by DEQ, who is everybody's representative, everything is filed on the website, almost immediately. There's a couple of exceptions when that stuff's written, Friday, media posting, Sunday, Monday. But everything has been posted.
Then if there's something that doesn't go according to the plan or the water quality's not made enough, who has the responsibility to fix it?
The, it'll be brought to the attention of the planning commission because that's part of the special use permit. And the planning commission, through their representatives, will then get with the developer and work out any type of solutions that we need to work out at that point in time. But that's just part of the construction process. Construction occurs, it's being monitored. There's got to be some minor modifications that are made. If there are major modifications, they come back here.
And occupancy can't be given until that's verified and it's built out for the plan. And then going forward, it's any kind of zoning in our township, anything that's built out. If something happens later that's not part of the approval. We had one recently where we just approved a project and they did something that we said they couldn't do. And then we all pay attention. That's part of enforcement through the zoning administrator's position. So, if there's an infraction, you have different recourse depending on the site. And I mean, that's the case with anything that's built in the township.
Paul Rundog here. I gotta, I gotta ask, to then clarify what I think he was trying to get at. If they decide tomorrow, the Walgreens wants to build a building across the entranceway from Myers, they gotta go get, what kind of site plan approval do they need?
They come back in. They have to do it.
Everything, everything that's going to be built and that's...
The only thing that can be built there right now is that mire.
Okay.
And the infrastructure's in place for that mire. And we're actually, we've said at this point, the developers know this, that we're not looking to approve any plans before this is resolved. And we have a new conceptual site plan, because the site plan, as you had mentioned, has changed some from the original inception of this project. So, we're looking for something that's updated and current and reflects some of the changes in density, some of the changes in location, so that it all jives. I mean, this project has been going on for a very long time. And so, there's changes that have been made as part of, as John mentioned, the evolution of the project. So, at this point, everybody's in agreement. They were crossing Ts and dotting Is and getting things up to the present before we move forward. But right now, the mire is going in, the internal roadway is going in, the constructed wetlands are going in, and the roadwork is being done on 72 and Lautner. And that's all that's approved.
You know, the people you're talking about, they've got the responsibility, watch this, Cardinal and whatever, are all hired by somebody. If that contract is just not renewed, they're not going to do it on their own. You're not going to work on your own.
There's the county and then there's the MDQ. They're responsible also. And they're not hired. Grand Traverse County, and then there are also the MDQ.
What department of Grand Traverse County?
Well, they're, they're part of this, the water, stormwater. And then the MDQ, MDQ's there.
County doesn't do stormwater anymore. That's strictly...
No.
That's right. They pull it from that person that does it. Yeah, the MDQ's out there all the time.
Just because, just because the incidences have happened, that's the only reason the MDQ is there.
Well, if the incidences happen again, we have a stormwater management plan that's in place with monitoring and we'll know about it. So, you'll know about it because you're going to be watching the website. Somebody will for you.
What website?
Uh, John, I'll have to...
Well, they can go to the township website.
The township website don't even show who the new car gets you.
You can, you can come in here. Don't get me started on the township website.
I'd be glad to provide you all the information.
Just walk in here. We'll get it for you.
I'll tell you their website. Is that...
That's right. There you go.
I'd be glad to help you.
Any other questions from the public? Hearing none, closing the public comment at 8:09. If you're going to get up and leave, please do it quietly because we still have a little bit of business to get through. We will get to the PC business. Nikki, do you have anything?
I do.
You do?
I do. At our next meeting in July, you'll have a site plan review for the MI Local Hops, which you've seen on 72, nice agricultural business. And they would like to build a processing facility for hops. It's a seasonal use type of business where they'll process the hops in the fall. So, you'll see that site plan coming next month.
Okay. Anything else?
Lots of calls for this, but nothing kind of...
John, do you have any ideas for us?
I'll pass.
Why did you always share?
Good question.
I will, I will give an update. Nikki, is it okay if I update on the position Troy and I are on the committee to...
Oh, yeah.
Sure. I mean, not anybody who goes to the board meeting knows. So, Nikki will be leaving us before too long for different pasture. I'm not going to say greener. And we, Trey and I have been on the search committee to interview candidates to become the Acme Township zoning administrator. We, Monday of last week, we met with four candidates and interviewed them. Amy Genema from the board is also on that committee with us. And we made a recommendation. The board was in agreement. And I believe that she's extended a position to somebody. So, we're waiting to hear back on that. But Thursday, oh, well, the board may be here deciding on Thursday, but I'm pretty sure that fate, this decision's already been made. I don't know. I know that chairperson after, after him from the audience, I don't know. I don't know the exact status on that, but I believe that we're moving forward on that. So, that'll be exciting. With or without, oh, yeah, Mr. White too. Anyway, I just want you guys to know that because it hasn't really been announced that Nikki is going to be now working in the township anymore, so. And then Marcy, I believe that you have something in your education that you'd like to share.
Yes. Last Thursday, I went to a green infrastructure conference. And they gave best ways to implement green infrastructure. And they really did a good job explaining all of different methods from the bio swales and retention gardens and the planned wetlands to impervious pavement and impervious pavement over large, like, pipes that drain slowly. I mean, there was just everything that you could imagine as an opportunity. And they talked about working with road commissions or your MDOT on road projects that are up and coming so that you can get on their slate of wanting that done as they do the engineer design work to implement some of these different green technologies. They talked about working with private landowners and business owners. And I think one of the most interesting things is they said that if a community can control the stormwater on just its road systems, it is controlling 50% of the stormwater within the township or the county. And so, for us, you know, we have a lot of roads and a lot of stormwater that runs down. And I think there's just some opportunities to look at how we might be able to catch some of that beforehand. And it talked about making sure that all the residents are educated about how slowly these green infrastructures grow and develop and about how they aren't going to look beautiful and perfect for about three years. And that it was really, they had incentives. They created incentives in some communities that stormwater fees were based on the amount of impervious pavement you had and how that was all functioning. And doing the low-impact development at the start of a project as opposed to retrofitting, how would you quantify what they said? There's a huge savings that happens when...
In certain scenarios, that new development, if you use low-impact development and green infrastructure, in the long run, the cost is less because of, for various scenarios, it was different reasons. But I was there too.
So, yeah, that was really kind of the highlights, is how to go about implementing it and working with people and things we could do as a community. And I also picked up, if anybody is interested, there is the Upper Manassee River Restoration, which would go really well with our Acme Creek restoration. And the Great Lakes Green Street Book. And it gives you like a breakdown of all these different streets that they've implemented green infrastructure on. So, I grabbed an excerpt if anybody would like to look at it or make copies or borrow it for a while.
They had a good portion where they went through four different examples and talked about what was used in each example. One of them is very local. It's in Sutton's Bay. They've put in, is it, I think, 18 curbside rain gardens. And then they did these big channels underneath some of the roads that all go to a large constructed wetland in the downtown area. The Watership Center has been spearheading that project. Thought that was interesting. There's also some interesting conflict between good ideas and municipalities. And so, getting some of those in line. There was a guy that was suggesting by taking the road down to a narrower road, you'd have less impervious surface than like a neighborhood. And I said, but what if you have the county that's involved and they won't plow the roads because it's not a 66-foot right-of-way or a certain-sized road bed? And there's different challenges when we're in northern Michigan. The other one was crowning the road so that you get water to run off into like swales on the side of the road. And there's issues with that with plows just kind of ripping the top of the road off. So, it's an interesting dynamic between what works and how our roads are maintained currently that I think is a struggle that I thought was insightful, I guess. But, but there's some cool projects going on in the state. So, it was a good, good little day-long thing. Anybody else got anything lately, education-wise? Okay, I think that's it. Unless anyone has anything else.
I have one other announcement. Whoa. Snuck that on air. There is a special board meeting on Thursday. Anybody who's interested in what we're doing with the parks, there is going to be discussion on the short-term and long-term needs and direction of where the parks are going. And that's going to be an open study session with a lot of public input and back and forth. I welcome all of you to come and have some input.
Anything else?
Just real quick, once you talked about that stream restoration, if anybody is interested, you can look up Powder Creek Restoration Project in Leonel County. That's another one that the tribe worked on and that's a good example.
Is it in any relationship to the Acme Creek project that was going in the 90s?
No.
With no further comment, the chair would entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I may push that way to adjourn.
I second.
You don't have to say it with such... All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Mr. Walter, you've got a... Is that boiling after?
So, it wasn't the... What did you do to fix it?